All right. Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Monday, November—pipe down! I hereby call the Monday, November 27th, 2023 Cumberland Town Council meeting to order. Just a bit of housekeeping before we get into the agenda. We had an executive session at 6:00 PM pursuant to Title I MRSA 405-6C Real Property, which is kind of the larger affordable housing RFP that we are in discussions with Westbrook Development Corporation with. We anticipate and hope to release the RFP prior to our December 11th meeting. So look forward to that. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from both November 13th, 2023, and November 20th, 2023.
So moved.
Second, ma'am.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. First other—or first up is the manager's report. We are starting off with something positive. I'd love to bring Chief Rumsey up to talk with us a little bit about his team's response to the incidents in Lewiston.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Chair. Appreciate you having us here this evening. The evening of Wednesday, October 25th, is one that none of us will ever forget. At about 7:30, a colleague reached out to ask if I'd heard about a possible mass shooting in Lewiston. The rest of the night was filled with anxiety, uncertainty, and angst. Our officers who were on duty were waiting on the west end of town in the event the suspect fled in our direction or in the event that we were asked for help. Actually, one of those officers is on duty tonight. He was going to be here, but he just got called away to handle a call for Joe, so Joe could stay. All of us were waiting to see how we could assist. We were anguished for our colleagues and their communities a few miles away, not even able to imagine the fear, trauma, and loss they were experiencing. I remember a quote from Mr. Rogers—and I think about this all the time because I just love this quote—it's always stuck with me. He said, "When I was a little boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.'" Tonight, I'm proud to take a few moments to recognize two of our teammates, our helpers, who were called into service to aid the effort to respond to and recover from this unspeakable tragedy. Officer Joe Burke, who's with us here tonight, has been a member of the Cumberland County's Regional Emergency Services Unit for the past three years. He currently serves as one of the unit's designated marksmen. Joe deployed with the ESU—as we call it—to Lewiston on the night of October 25th in the immediate aftermath of the shootings, and again on the night of the 27th. Both nights, Joe performed overwatch and support for searches as the effort was underway to find the individual responsible for the attacks. Officer Caitlin Sawyer, who wanted to be here with us tonight, but she's been dealing all day with a power outage at her home, so she wasn't able to join us. She's been trained in and has been providing group and individual peer support for police officers for the past six years. Peer support following a critical incident is imperative to minimize the long-term effects of post-traumatic stress. The process helps officers understand that their bodies and their minds are having normal reactions after being exposed to abnormal events. As soon as the Lewiston fugitive apprehension effort concluded, Caitlin and other trained peers jumped into action, and through a combination of individual peer support and group critical incident debriefs have rendered mental health first aid to hundreds of first responders. Just prior to the conclusion of the hunt for the perpetrator, I reached out to the chiefs in Sabatys and Lisbon. I was aware that their teams were exhausted, having worked around the clock with very little rest in the 48 hours following the shootings. I offered to coordinate by getting them some assistance, and Chief McGee of the Lisbon Police Department accepted my offer. Working with my fellow Cumberland County chiefs, in short order, we arranged for six officers to help supplement their staffing around the clock through the weekend. Several of our Cumberland teammates signed up to help their fellow officers in Lisbon. Ultimately, this assistance was rendered unnecessary by the conclusion of the search for the perpetrator. I'm intensely proud of the members of this police department, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to recognize two of our fine officers for their contributions to the effort in Lewiston. Caitlin, in absentia, and Joe, thank you very much.
Any comments?
Nice job, Joe.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thanks so much, Joe.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Caitlin, in absentia.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under "New Business" for further council discussion. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to—oh, wonderful! Welcome! If you wouldn't mind just stating—
Thank you. Very nice to be here.
Would you mind just stating your name and where you live?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
It's Catherine Pelletrell. I live at 55 Drown Road down in Village Green, same street as the proposed affordable housing development. And my question is really, when you made your opening remarks and you said that the—you called it an RFP, but I believe it's probably the response to the RFP is going to be released by December 11th, maybe, something like that? I don't understand how far along the process will be at that point. Like, when you release that, is that something that the council has already signed off on, and it's like the finalized document? Is that like, okay, this is now open for public discussion? Like, if you could just describe for us a little bit more what phase of the process you will be in at that point, and how abutters—the neighbors—who will be tremendously impacted by a large project here—we'll have an opportunity to have some input.
So, great questions. Did you—Mr. Shane just want to touch on the MOU process?
Sure. The next step in the process is to look at a memorandum of understanding with the developer. And that basically starts the process. What'll happen at that point, we'll schedule three public meetings. Those public meetings will be to take input on the project that is proposed, to give feedback, to give ideas. One of the things—I'll just share with you because I think it's important to your neighborhood—is that there be two connections—not just to Drown Road, but what else—to Tuttle Road, so that there is a kind of a splitting of the traffic. I think all of us agreed that was—Ron Kopp brought that up, and I think that you'll see as part, I hope, of the design, and that will all be priced out. We'll be talking about what the cost will be, what the impacts will be, and that's only at our level. Just because we say we'd like the project, it still has to go through the planning board, which goes through a whole nother process. But January and February will be the time we'll be setting three meetings. We'll have those dates on the 11th. We'll have a rough estimate, and that'll be refined over January and February of costs and balancing the costs. What is this going to cost the community, and what is it going to offset? Because it isn't a TIF district. Those property tax revenues in the entire TIF district can't be used for the general fund. They have to be used for TIF projects, which are typical capital projects. So all of that will be discussed on the 11th. We still had a lot of questions. The council had a lot of questions for the developer, and I believe we're a lot closer than we were, you know, two weeks ago. So we'll see what happens on the 11th, but that's when we're hopeful to—at least—that Thursday before the 11th is when we post the agenda. When we post the agenda, the RFP will be there, so you can see the whole RFP, and that'll start the clock ticking, and then we'll see where it goes on that evening. And I guess it's more to come, unfortunately.
Super helpful. That's super helpful. The—I guess the question still remains, though, is what's an MOU? And what does the—what is the town committing to by entering into an MOU with a vendor?
It's just an agreement that we're going to basically negotiate with this one development group, that we're not going to basically take it and try to play him against somebody else or her against somebody else. It's just that we're both partners in this. We're going to take it through the public process, and then we'll see.
So is—it—let me put a finer point on it. Once you sign—the MOU—is there any turning back from that? Can you walk away from an MOU with this vendor?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, the council may not decide to do anything. There's a lot of options they have, and I think those will be discussed on the 11th, as well as if the council's ready to sign the MOU. So that could be delayed as well. So there is more time, and there is more time to talk. And January and February—if we move forward—will be a lot—not a meeting like this. It'll most likely be at Valhalla, where tables will be set up and people can actually get to work and ask a lot of the questions, and we'll have them all posted on the wall, and we'll take a lot of notes, because it's important to get a lot of feedback and support for them.
It is. There's a lot of interest in our neighborhood about this, understandably. Just because you don't see a lot of people here tonight doesn't mean that there isn't—there aren't questions, and we just don't really know what to react to yet. Yeah, Shirley's—
I was waiting—
Of course.
Sorry. One of the other things we'll be discussing—so we'll discuss whether we want to grant this MOU to this developer. And then the other—one other thing that we'll be discussing that same night is putting it out to referendum, because this is a really important project for our town and our community. And so we will be discussing—that will be an agenda item. We talked about—I think I can say we talked about it. We talked about it in an executive session. We've had two executive sessions, both lasted about an hour. They were really just negotiating so that we could be more clear on what the project is, so that we can help residents by answering their questions. But that will also be an item that we, as a council, will vote on on the 11th.
Thank you.
Sure. Of course.
Great questions.
Just one point. The council makes no decisions in executive session. Any decisions that the council make will always be done in public.
Right. Formally in public, but let's be real, you have some other conversations.
You may have discussions in private with a private entity for tax purposes or whatever, but decisions are made in public.
I'm going to sit down, almost. I'll just make one other comment on the one other issue that I came before the council, before some of you were elected. It was very clear that some decisions had been made outside of the room before the meeting, and the council came in and just voted it, and that was all good. So I have a little bit of discomfort as—about the issue coming up at the same meeting at which you are voting, so that you don't have a chance to really consider what you might hear at that meeting.
To be fair—because I'm always one bucking the process—we did talk about it back in December when we decided to send the—we've talked about it a couple of times. We talked about it when the Committee on Affordable Housing came and recommended three areas of town. We talked about it again in—when did we ask—put out the RFP in October?
Yeah.
We talked about it again in October. Some of us voted against even sending it to RFP. So that was another opportunity that we discussed it openly in the public forum. So this is like the third time at it, and people are starting to pay attention.
Yeah, I mean, that's completely accurate. What you haven't—what—at those meetings—and I watched all of them in line—at those meetings, the tenor of the conversation around the RFP was, "Oh, we're putting out the RFP to see what we get back. This is kind of an experiment, you know? Let's see what we get back." And now I'm realizing that maybe it was actually more than that, and you are moving ahead more quickly than maybe I had realized, I guess is what I'm saying. So thank you for all your input. I'm sorry to take so much time, but—it's an important issue for us.
I—thank you so much for your comments. I would say that we—you know, as Shirley mentioned, you know, we started out with—what the Affordable Housing was part of the 2009 Comprehensive Plan. It was part of the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. We had a task force who was looking at kind of the viability and the need within our town. We've put out studies to understand. So we're getting a lot of information. It's been information gathering. We're assessing that information, the need, and now we have—as Mr. Kopp once said—a dance partner that we're in discussions with. But this has really been an opportunity—at least for me—I wouldn't speak for other council members—but to understand what we have in front of us versus what our study said, not only the one that we did with supply and demand analysis, but also some of the data that we got from GP Cog. And so through that, you know, some of those have—kind of dialogues have happened in executive session. It's sort of the opportunity for us as a council to look at the need, look at the proposal, and determine if it makes sense, and we are still doing that. And we will also be—at some point—we're losing kind of a longer-term roadmap that shows the process, because we have—we know folks want to know what the process is, that you want to know if—when these public meetings are happening, so you can come and we can have dialogue, and it can be really collaborative. So we are taking all of that onboard, and our goal is to be incredibly transparent so that we are listening to everything that, you know, that our community is also concerned about on this as well, because we do understand these are real concerns. I don't know if that helps.
That's all we can ask, that you're listening.
Of course. Is there anyone else that would like to comment in the audience? Or we'll move on to legislation and policy, then. Item 23-125, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on approval of a warfing-out permit at 307 Foreside Road as recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission. We are lucky enough to have Rick Thompson here tonight, who is the Chair of the Coastal Waters Commission. Rick, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Would you mind just giving us kind of the 40,000-feet looking down? There's a lot of great information in the packet, DEP permits and Army Corps, but if you wouldn't mind—
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to. I know the material that we received before we did our site visit has been distributed to you, and I don't know how much time you've spent with that. And I noticed that no one here is here this evening from Atlantic Environmental, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project, as best I can answer them. But it is a fairly complex project from the standpoint of the number of landings to get down to the water. There's a fair amount of vertical descent to the water, and it is in a part of Broad Cove where there is quite a bit of tidal area that has to be transverse to get to what I would consider to be usable water. And even the proposed facility is at low, very low tide, is going to be a ground, but it will be usable, I would say, probably from one-third tide and higher. But yeah, so the project itself is fairly complex, but I think the folks at Atlantic Environmental—who we worked with before—we worked with them on an adjacent property—have done a pretty good job of designing something that makes sense in terms of the topography and—as well as the overall objective of the project. And so we arrived on the scene on the 24th of October to review it with the owner and Tim Forster from Atlantic Environmental, and there were also some other folks there from Coastal—the people that are going to do the floats and the pier—the ramp. And at that point, a lot of the work in terms of restoring some of the damage from the storm of December 22 had been completed. In fact, they were ready to just remove a lot of their equipment. So we were able to see it pretty plainly. Because of the inability to get down to actual tide level or get down below that, we didn't really—we didn't take the opportunity to get down there. But we could see pretty plainly that the project is pretty much as is defined in the application. And so we spent some time talking with the owner and Tim, and in terms of trying to check some of the boxes that are on the three-page form that I think is also included in your package. I don't know who came up with this form, but it really is a great tool for us to look at the various requirements of land use standards. So we went through that with the owner and the contractor, and we found that it met the standards of the code. And we came back here and had a public hearing. There were no members in the public that were in attendance at that meeting. And after some further discussion with Tim, we approved the project. Some of the things—the key things, I think—from our perspective, when we look at situations like this, is you know, what—does the overall construction or the architecture or the plan make sense in terms of the topography and how it's going to be used by the owner? It certainly met that standard. We also want to make sure that the colonial rights are going to be maintained, and the structure does allow for a 6-foot-2-inch clearance at mean high tide for that, without necessary any stairs up and down for that to transpire. There were some questions that were raised by DEP in terms of the—whether there could be some spacing between some of the decking to allow, you know, material—biological material underneath the deck to survive. But frankly, this—the decking and the landings are so far up above the ground level that there's plenty of light and other things that will allow that to continue to nurture itself and grow. And we had some discussion about whether they had considered other access points, and I think they satisfied us that they had explored them, and it really didn't meet their needs. They're looking to put a basically Grady White out, probably 300, 400, maybe more feet beyond where this float's going to be. The water really sholls out quite gradually there. So much like what we are experiencing in terms of accessing moorings in Broad Cove Reserve, they have maybe even a more severe gradual topography going away from shore than we're dealing with at Broad Cove Reserve. So it's—he's going to have a mooring quite a ways out. And I would think that between the use of the boat Grady White and, you know, kayaks and other, you know, watercraft will certainly meet their needs. I know that the size of the float was proposed to be a little bigger, but that got scaled back by—I don't know what—it probably was by Maine DEP to the 12 feet by 24 feet, which is sort of standard, you know, float size and configuration. It'll have pontoons, so it's not resting on the—yeah, pontoons, so it's not resting on the—completely on the dead-low tide.
Great. Any questions from the—oh!
Whether you have any other thoughts or questions, or—
Any questions? Shirley?
I read—I can't say I read every word, but I read enough to see that the application—whoever filled out the application at the engineer's office in Woolwich should have capitalized a few more letters, but I hope it wasn't someone I taught years ago in the 80s in Woolwich. But I think this is an incredible improvement over what's there. I found the pictures compelling. The bank erosion there was—
Severe.
Severe. Just to see the trees falling into the ocean. So for that remediation to happen as part of that project, I'm in favor of the whole project. I mean, if they weren't doing a dock, they would have to do nothing for remediation, right? Is that—
Theoretically, but practically speaking—
Right. It would be to their benefit to protect their property, but—
Absolutely. Yeah, the owner was absolutely committed to having to do something one way or the other, otherwise they weren't going to have a bank there years to come as the water levels get higher. Bob?
Actually, I think this is the best application I've ever seen, for the primary reason that this is the first time where we've seen the owner extend this to his neighbors, in fact, follow up with a deed. And I think this is—it's what we've talked about—I was on the Coastal Waters Commission. We've talked about this when I was on it, and just talked about in the past of how to minimize float, 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 pier, pier, pier at every lot. And seeing the neighbors work together here, this is—to me—is remarkable in itself, and it's—he should be applauded for that. And, you know, the—it is not a—I don't view this as a huge environmental impact. Here it anchors the design of it. It's very straightforward. It's—you know, it's—you couldn't have minimized it much more than it is to achieve the results. So I think that the engineers have done well. The owner particularly deserves some credit for the reaching out to his neighbors.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bob. I got there a little early, just kind of—I've never met this gentleman before, and I just wanted to kind of get to know him a little bit before we had our site visit. And yeah, I agree with you. He's definitely committed to doing it right, and—
I remember us going on a sidewalk further down towards the Falmouth End, and the conversation was just the opposite, you know? "If you don't allow me to do this, I'm going to cut my neighbors off," and—
I remember that meeting. Yes.
Madam Chair, if you'll allow him to continue, I'll make a motion for both.
We have a public hearing.
We—yeah, we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this particular agenda item? I would entertain a motion for 23-125.
I have a question for the manager before.
Please.
Bill, I mean, this is a very thorough—I mean, I've been through this four times and read it. I mean, I've never realized it was so much paperwork to put a float in. How are these taxed?
They're taxed.
I mean, and that's what I'm getting at. I mean, because it's a sizable investment, I mean—
Yeah. I don't know if John breaks it out, how much of that is part of the property or how much of it's personal property, but they are taxed, and they are—it's significant investment from the homeowner, for sure. Oh, yeah. I was shocked when I saw the total price. I mean, that's a huge investment, so—
Any work on the waterfront like that, Ron, is very expensive, if it's done well and done right.
Twenty years ago, they would have to go through the Coastal Waters Commission and the planning board, and the council decided to skip that step because the planning board said, "All we're doing is rubber-stamping these, because these are the folks that know the water and giving the right recommendation to the council." They might get away with that in Hopswell.
But it's not just Coastal Waters. It's the DEP. It's the Army Corps of Engineers.
It's a huge review.
Yeah, there were three or four different agencies—
Natural Resource Council of Maine weighed in on it.
So do you remember the house before—the house next to theirs, probably 15 years ago, one of the storms? We have some of the most highly erodible soils came right up to the back porch—I mean, right up to the doorstep, and they could not walk out without falling down, you know, 20 feet. I mean, MDOT helped them basically remediate that after we intervened. It took them almost a year to get them to—their culverts failed on Route 88, and it basically almost wiped out their house. We helped out a resident on Range Road for the same thing, a storm, a horrific storm there. I remember we had to sign off on something, so that— That's right. We actually moved their whole house with Army Corps away from the erodible soils that are coming underneath Route 100 and came to the back of their home. That's right. Good—that was really good. So, yeah, we have some pretty difficult soils in some places, and this is one of them, for sure.
I suspect there may be more of these, because a lot of the properties in this area got hit pretty hard in that storm in December.
I was heartened by the replanting of the native flowers in that as part of the application.
It's part of the application. That had not been done yet. They had just completed some of the embankment work, so that had not been done. We were not able to observe that when we were at the site.
But just—the thought that's put into that for kind of preserving the larger ecosystem is, I think, something that's really important to many of us.
And it makes sense, too, in terms of the species that they chose.
Yes, indeed. I would entertain a motion.
Mike wants to give you one.
I'll do one. Sure. Madam Chair, I move to approve the warfing-out permit at 307 Foreside Road as recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Wonderful. All right. Moving on to 23-126, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on 2024 mooring allocations for Broad Cove Reserve mooring field as recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission. One other kind of question I had in here as well is I believe last year, we built out, Mr. Manager, some additional dry storage for kayaks and some kind of lightweight dinghies to accommodate the expansion of, of the mooring field. Just curious how, how that's working out, and if that's kind of been a, been a positive thing in terms of, you know, one of our larger goals being to get more people on the moorings and use of the moorings at Broad Cove. I wasn't sure if that was something that we had seen kind of, any, any feedback on.
To be honest with you, it, it was, you, as you recall, Tig, we, we worked hard to try to expand the, the number of moorings by 10 from 38 to 48 last, last spring, which we did. And, but it's interesting, when we go down to the, down there during this last summer, while there were 48 moorings out there, I don't think we ever observed more than 15 or 16 boats on moorings, nor did we observe more than 15 or 16 dinghies on the floats, which raises certain questions in our mind about, you know, why is that? Granted, the weather this summer was less than ideal for a boater, but it's one of the things that frankly, we as a committee want to kind of follow up on through the mooring renewal process, to try not, try to get some information from the mooring holders as to what their intent is to, in, in terms of having the mooring there and, and using it. Not so much from a punitive standpoint of taking it away or anything like that. It's more from a standpoint of trying to do our best to serve the community. But it's, it was kind of disheartening to see the work that we'd gone through in the spring to, to expand it and how little it was used. But it, it is what it is, and we'd like to get more information so that we can better understand that. And we're going to come up with some questions that'll accompany the, the mooring renewal process.
And with that, I was curious as to kind of where we are with the expected timeline for the permit for the master float plan?
That's the $64,000 question of the evening, maybe.
The chief, the police chief and myself, the police chief staffs, Coastal Waters, will be meeting with Barney Baker virtually, I think in two weeks from now, Bren, was that with Barney? Next week, next week. To ask that same question, this is the Lifetime Achievement Award of floats. I've just never seen it go so long. We've had, we've been tripped up, in fairness to Barney, because it's such a significant eel, eel grass bed in this area, so it always seems to get scrutinized anytime we ask anything there. So, we've been very careful, and we've been very good working with DEP, and Normandow are a consultant to help with that. So, they've gotten some really good information about the beds there, and they think they're very healthy, and some of the most vibrant beds in Casco Bay, of course. So, we're maybe steps toward the process, but it would, to me, I think we should have our permit by now. It's been almost four years. So, Barney's going to update us. He sold his company to the company he's now working at, and hopefully there is a timetable for those permits, because with those permits, then we will be eligible to apply for the ship grants, the Small Harbor Improvement Program through MDOT, which we've been very successful. We've already got one float through there, and the stair project down when we only had one access to the water, that was done through that, as well as over $200,000 of the pier was, at Broad Cove was funded through those programs. So, we have been successful in the past, and we hope to be in the future in obtaining the additional floats. So, stay tuned. Hopefully, I'll have something on the 11th for you.
Great. Sure.
So, I read your, the note here with interest. Is there a way, or is there a plan to kind of do like an exit interview, if you will, with the mooring holders to say, "How did you, how did you use it? And if you didn't use it, why didn't you use it?" And is there, is there an active plan in place?
Yes, I think we're going to, we're going to send out a questionnaire. Not, not an extensive questionnaire, but just maybe five, five questions or so, in hopes, keep it simple, but yet try to get some meaningful feedback in terms of how or why the mooring either was or wasn't used last year, and, and probably more futuristically thinking in terms of what are your intentions of using the mooring going forward. There's, there are all kinds of different permutations that you could kind of imagine as to why people did not use those moorings. But it is, it's, it's kind of disappointing because we got over 30 people on, on a waitlist, and we want to try to be as inclusive as we can to all people who want to use it. But to see it used as last, as the way it was over the last summer was, in my opinion, disappointing.
This is a public hearing. I don't know if anyone in the audience-
So, as a result, we are really not inclined to expand the number of moorings this year. We're going to continue to maintain the moorings at 48, just as we did last year, until we, we achieve the ability to expand the floats and, and that sort of thing for primarily safety reasons in terms of access of dinghies to the floats and, and how those floats might be used.
This is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience has any commentary on this item? No? Any other counsel? All right. Welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the 2024 mooring allocation for Broad Cove Reserve mooring field as recommended by the Coastal Waters Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Rick.
All right. We'll round out with some new business, starting far down on the left. Mr. Cop?
I'll donate my $20 to the Forage Food Pantry, very worthy cause. This benefits a lot of people in the community. And my thoughts and prayers go out to the family of George Small. George Small is having some medical issues, and I only got bits and pieces of it, but I believe they're having a get-together at George's house to help set up all the Christmas lights.
Which is a lot of work.
Saturday at 9:00.
When is it, Bill?
Saturday at 9:00.
Saturday at 9:00.
Jack's order.
Anybody that's willing to help. George has done this my entire life. I mean, I always goodbye, and, and I mean, it's, it's really great, and I hope the community pulls together to go give him a hand because George and Carolyn have done a lot for this community, and-
His surgery went very well, and he's coming home Monday.
Is he?
Yep. So, his doctors were very happy with the way it went, and he's recovering well and good spirits, and he'll be home Monday. So, that's all great news.
All right. That's all I have, Madam.
Maybe he can come home after dark so he can get the full effect.
I would just remind us, the three of us, we have an ordinance committee meeting Thursday?
Thursday at 6:00.
At 6:00.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Mr. Reeves?
I was actually going to mention George as well. I'm, like, as I've known him my whole life, and the older George gets, he seems to be putting more lights out. It looked like Saint Nick's, Nick just drove by and threw up. I mean, it-
Griswolds have arrived.
Oh, man. He, he doesn't spare anything, and I, I keep saying to Carolyn that, "When's it going to cut down?" They have no plans, so. The other thing I want to do is just recognize Chris Yale out in the audience. Chris is the one that donated the last meeting we had, donated a whole box of meat, moose meat for the food pantry, and thank you and your brother, Chris. We really appreciate it. It, Bill, we'll tell you, it's, it goes quick, and it's very much appreciated. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Counselor Story King?
I just wanted to follow up and thank the residents of Spruce Mountain, I mean, Spruce Mountain, Spruce Lane, that we met with last week. They had questions about Shoreland Zone and some, pointed out some things that are missing from our ordinances. So, we're going to have an ordinance meeting this Thursday, but I want to thank them for their time in bringing that to our attention. I forwarded an email with, from our last library advisory board meeting, and there is discussion beginning again. It's not new news, but it's post-COVID, refreshing news about a library expansion, raising, raising money for that, because, as you know, there are limited capital funds for projects like that. However, the town has already invested some capital in exploring the options there. So, they have, back when the Historical Society Building was moved, we had a preliminary drawing done of what an expansion might look like, and most recently, we had a space analysis done that the town paid for. So, heading up that library expansion committee will be Bert Kendall. If you remember, we appointed him fairly recently, and that's what made him stand out among the candidates for appointment to that committee, was his willingness to lead such an endeavor. And then finally, Shellfish also met last week. I had seven meetings in three days, I think, last week. Shellfish met last week, and there, it was kind of an emergency meeting because the Department of Marine Resources thinks that we need to change our shellfish allocations the way our language is written, but that, our language is written the way they told us to do it four or five years ago. So, the town clerk and the police chief are working on getting that language straightened out. As you know, we did the allocations, we approved the allocations a few meetings ago. Those may need to come back, or they might just need to be adjusted in-house. But the, because clamming licenses go up for sale at the beginning of January, we need to have a handle on that. That's why there was an emergency meeting. And that's all I have.
All right. The annual employee luncheon is on December 7th at noon at Valhalla, I believe. Is that right?
Correct.
And then the other thing that we may want to consider, and we'll touch on this on the December 11th meeting, is canceling the December 25th Town Council meeting. For those of us that celebrate Christmas, I can think of no one else I would rather spend it with, but you know, I realize that all of you may not feel that way, so we can, we can talk about that at our next meeting. And then just on, on the, on the holiday spirit note reminder that the fire station is selling the most beautiful trees. They're $50 apiece. We bought two, and they are just lovely and fragrant, fragrant, and it's just, it's a great cause, so.
That reminds me, the firefighter for kids' pancake breakfast is this coming Sunday. How could we forget? How could I forget? Josh reminds me daily.
Their pancakes, right?
So, go to the, go to the breakfast and then go get your tree. That's our plan.
Love it.
Tig, can we move that December 25th? Can we do that tonight, just to get it out of the way?
It's up to you.
Fine with me. Yeah.
I think it's fine. Just take off the-
Bailey and Mark might want to meet, but-
We'll let them.
Nobody else will be here, but-
Madam Chair, I, I move to cancel the December 25th Town Council meeting.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I think you should have it.
Chris will be there.
I'll say that, Chris.
We'll leave it unlocked for you, Chris.
Okay, I'll be right here.
All right. All those in favor? All right. That takes us to the end. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, we- Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone.